Okay, good evening. We'd like to call to order this meeting of the Cunningham Township Board. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Ms. Hershey.
Here.
Ms. Colacetti.
Here.
Ms. Bishop.
Here.
Ms. Wilkin.
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Ms. Genowith.
Present.
Ms. Owana.
Next item is approval of minutes from previous meetings of February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, and March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
By Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Any substantial changes? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? Public participation. If anyone wishes to address the Cunningham Town Board, please step up to the microphone. Seeing none. Committee to verify bills, town fund and GA fund.
Good evening. So. Supervisor's memo. Okay, so this last month.
Your mic on.
Oh, is Kenny here me? This last month, we had in expenditures forty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-five cents in the town fund. In the general assistance fund, we had seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixteen cents. Our total expenditures was a hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eleven cents. And I'll go over the rest in the supervisor's memo. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions? Is there a motion to approve the town fund and general assistance fund bills?
So moved.
Second.
Who made the motion, please?
I did.
Mary Alice? Seconded by Sharice. All those, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Hershey.
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti.
Yes.
Ms. Bishop.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin.
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item, the reports of officers, third quarter financial report.
Yeah, so let me just, I'll just highlight a few things from the supervisor's memo and then we can go over the financial report. So basically with general assistance, things have stayed steady. We have sixty-one current participants down from sixty-two. Ten are homeless. We had twenty-three applications last month, up from twenty, which is not much. We rental assistance, and we see this pretty much every spring around this time. We had three households supported with rental assistance for the month of March. That's a little bit lower than usual at this time. Part of that issue is that we're only providing one month of rent, so sometimes people will come and they need more than a month to be, to be made whole. We're hoping that the implementation of the ARPA rental assistance will be able to increase that allocation and serve more people. We do, we had thirty-eight applications last month, two months ago, now we have thirty-two applications. So we still have quite a few applications coming in. We've spent ninety-two point four percent of our budget. We, things have slowed down with homeless assistance vouchers. Essentially, our community was anticipating an additional round of emergency housing vouchers, and we recently were told that Housing Authority was told that they were not awarded those vouchers. So that's going to slow things down for individuals moving into housing. Luckily, our township has been awarded sponsor-based vouchers. We're able to start referring families. I think you saw that at our special meeting. So for families, we'll be able to, for literally homeless families in our program, we will have a voucher option for them. We have also been told that the Housing Authority will open its waitlist for housing choice vouchers. So anyone who wants to know about when that waitlist is open, I would encourage you to get on the Housing Authority's listserv as well as Cunningham Township. So we will definitely, as soon as we know, send out to everyone on our list that opportunity. And I think I would say the other thing of note is that the homeless shelters remain full. Both the women's shelter and men's shelter at the low barrier. And CU at Home has some hotel availability in, under kind of like, when there's a severe weather situation. But otherwise, we basically as a community, because a portion of CU at Home is still occupying a portion of Stride space, we're not really able to work, you know, as a community, serve out to capacity at Stride. So hopefully, as CU at Home finds, finds a new home, we'll be able to increase that capacity. So the pieces are in place, but we're not there yet as a community. We continue to be full in our emergency housing program. And yeah, I think the only other thing is we are seeing a market increase in food assistance requests with the, with the end of the COVID snap bump. So we're seeing that. And we're starting to see utility requests come in. The utilities are frozen. The power is not able to be shut off when it's under a certain temperature in the winter. And because we're beautiful in spring out, that means for some people that they have their power shut off. So we are receiving some phone calls. Most of them are from Champaign. We are only serving Urbana residents with that. So we are able to assist those Urbana residents and refer the Champaign residents to Lyheed if they haven't used it already. Happy to answer any questions about the supervisor's memo before going on to the quarterly report. Okay, so in terms of quarterly report, you have this in your packet, but essentially, I would say we're, we're on deck. Anytime that you see something over seventy-five percent, roughly over seventy-five percent, you'll see notes associated with it. We're doing very well in terms of our investment income, and actually, I'm looking to do some additional strategic investment of funds next year so that we can boost that. As I had, you know, the temporary had made it, the assessor had made some temporary hires. And so in personnel other, you'll see that that hasn't gone up. We've basically, the assessor spent that budget and it stays at a hundred percent. So they didn't spend in quarter two. There's still the miscategorization issue. We do, under utilities, I just want to note that Lincoln Square was billing us for rent and not utilities under the lease. They caught that and sent us the bill for utilities, and we looked over those documents and paid that out. So you'll see the utilities is at eighty-five percent because we actually are paying part of last year's. I didn't catch that. Lincoln Square didn't catch it. Assessor didn't catch it. So we recently caught it. We made a one-time payment on our audit, so we're at a hundred percent there. Essentially, in our town fund, we are under budget. We're running at about sixty-one percent. And then in our general assistance, it's similar. So we're on track to spend down our IDHS grant. We got a larger-than-expected USD grant. We do have some fundraising we need to do for Solidarity Gardens, but that's a fund that we don't spend any more than we have, just like angel donors, so we're never going to run a deficit there. And then you'll see, we bought school supply programs with the additional dollars from USD that show up in supplies. We've done a lot of repairs at the building. I think we're in pretty good shape and things are steady there. But we did replace the boilers. They were at their lifetime. And then we've seen a high demand in rental assistance. So essentially, we're in GA, we're, we're not quite at budget in terms of expenses. We're at about seventy, sixty-seven percent, which I think is healthy because I tend to budget for about fifteen percent over as a just-in-case. So things are looking comfortable there. Any questions about the third quarter report?
Grace.
Thanks for walking us through that. I think page one and two makes sense to me. I don't know if you could explain more about page three, about the net income and some of those negatives? Like, did we value a negative?
Yeah, so net income is always tricky because we get paid our property taxes at the very end of the year, but this is on a cash basis. So the net income is going to look low because we're anticipating those property tax payments, and they'll come in May and June. And then that'll offset, and we'll see a balance. But in every case, we'll basically, you'll see us running net income. If we move to an accrual basis, which we've explored with the auditor, our auditor, so we have Cela as our accountant. They do not recommend that we move to an accrual basis for various reasons I could go into. But essentially, we do modified cash basis, and it does create this situation. We could always produce financial reports on an accrual basis, even if we're not accounting in that way, because we could, you know, we could put information. But generally speaking, if you look, our income is pretty much, basically with the exception of, of the angel donor and the solidarity gardens, where we don't spend any more than we have, our money is basically guaranteed. So it's not as important to look at the net income because we know that the, the dollars, the tax levy is guaranteed. Thank you.
Any other questions? There's no unfinished business. Moving on to, oh, sorry.
I'm just gonna hop over to the other computer.
Fair Housing Workshop overview.
So as I mentioned at our last meeting, we had three fair housing workshops, and I will just pull this up. How does that look? We had three fair housing workshops with our coalition partners, Housing Authority, RPC, CU Ten Eight Union Fair, Hope Fair Housing, and Housing Action Illinois. I know Christopher and Mary Alice were present. I'm sorry, maybe someone had come to the, the service providers. But I know that the two of you were present in some of those workshops. I want, I gave you the entire slide deck from the workshops for your reference. I found it, I mean, I've been working on housing discrimination, you know, and issues of fair housing for a number of years, and I definitely learned things from this workshop, in addition to making some new partnerships. We had, we counted a hundred and five people total who came to the three workshops, which was a really good turnout. We, here's the tenants workshop here. We had two different participants who had experienced housing discrimination, who gave testimony as part of the presentation. We really appreciate their, their testimony and their participation. I, what I did for this portion is I just pulled out, you have the whole slide deck, but I really wanted to just pull out a few slides that I thought would be relevant in our learning process. The, and I'll go over these slides, and then, you know, I would really encourage you, if you have questions about housing discrimination, we're working very close with Hope Fair Housing and Housing Action. I would start with Hope. And their contact information is in the slide deck, and you should feel comfortable reaching out to them at any time. They were very accessible. So basically, a few, I'll just do a handful of slides that I think were highlights. One is, there's different kinds of discrimination. One is direct. You know, it's very, you're treating someone less favorable. And then there's disparate impact, where a policy looks neutral on its face, but when, when put into practice, it has a greater negative impact on one class over the others. It's important to look at both of those kinds of discrimination, and both are actionable. And I learned a lot more about the actionable piece. I created, so the left hand is their slide, and then I added the city of Urbana protected classes, so you can kind of see all three. Some of the things I think it's important is to note that, yes, source of income effective the first of the year. Source of income in Urbana is protected class going back, so if somebody has a case within the last year, they're still able to bring that forward. It also is the case that in Illinois, protected classes rest record. And there's some interesting history that they shared around that piece. But as you can see, really, the city of Urbana provides the best protection over and above Illinois or the feds. And so it's important that we have enforcement across all three domains because of that, because they don't entirely line up. Here's some examples of prohibited acts. I think there is some confusion sometimes around like, well, can you just tell somebody I'm not? You know, I don't, I don't run to section eight and it's verbal. Or, you know, what if you just don't show somebody the unit, or you don't respond to their, their call, right? So refusing to rent someone or lying about the availability of housing is a very, very common occurrence. And so oftentimes, the situation, and this is the piece that I think as a city we need to untangle, is that the situation is that people are so used to discrimination as the baseline experience of their existence, trying to access housing if they have a voucher, or if they are person of color, or if they are from a low-income family, or if they have many children, or they're not a student. Those tend to be the big ones in our community. They're so used to it that they actually oftentimes will say, hey, do you take vouchers? And you might say, well, why are you saying that? Because that like triggers the landlord to then say, you know, no, I don't take vouchers, or, oh, I don't discriminate, but we don't have any housing available. And then the next person who walks in who doesn't have a voucher, there is housing available. The issue is that for, for tenants, they pay somewhere between twenty and forty dollars per application fee. So they're actually being really smart in asking people whether or not they're a discriminator upfront, because otherwise, they're going to have to pay four hundred dollars in application fees for ten units. I mean, so it can, it can really become expensive for them. And so that's why I think it's important for us to look at other tools in addition to tenants taking up this issue and, and bringing complaints for it, is because for that tenant, it really is, it's, it's very onerous to ask them to continue to pay application fees and then to be denied housing if it's, if it's hard to prove. That said, I support people in doing that, and we will help them. I just think we need additional tools. Steering units, like showing people units, you know, the example was given, steering a, a family with children to a first-floor unit rather than a second-floor unit so that their, the kid's feet doesn't make noise on the first floor. That's discriminatory. It actually could be, you know, it might be safer or better for that. They, the, the family with children should have the exact same options in front of them as the family without children. Denying access to certain amenities others have access to, charging additional or higher fees, we see this happen. This includes things like you have to pay two months of deposit or three months of deposit. And we see that a lot in the community. Oh, we're going to do a risk assessment because you're paying with a voucher. Now you have to pay three months' deposit. So we've seen this. Or having different application criteria or discriminatory ads or statements, including this is student housing, unless it's actually, or senior housing, there's only certain conditions under which you can state that. A fair housing violation is a prohibited act, plus a protected class equals discrimination. So I found that to be a really helpful definition, and the protected classes, as you saw in Urbana, are quite, you know, there's quite exhaustive. And I did send you a note that Champaign has changed their human rights ordinance to prohibit source of income discrimination explicitly. So we're really happy to see that they did that in December, underlying the enforcement of, of that issue. So what is source of income discrimination? I think this is important because it may look different in different situations. But when a landlord, mortgage lender, or other actors treat households unfairly because of their subsidy, non-wage income, or forms of home financing. And I think this is important that it, we understand that oftentimes, it's a proxy for other forms of discrimination. And I'll show you a slide that gets to that. So this is what the state law says. It should say state law, because feds say one thing, state says the other, ours says something. But this is the lawful manner by which an individual supports himself or herself, or his, his or her dependents. And so you can see it's veterans, it's people using housing choice vouchers, it's people who have survivor benefits or SSI, people on TANF, people who receive general assistance. These are all folks impacted. And what this means is someone's homeless and they can't get into housing. They have a voucher, but they don't have a choice in where to live, or they have a voucher and they lose it because they can't find a location. And so it can, or, you know, creates kind of a culture of disrespect. How this impacts people, it, this is discrimination based on race, gender, children or disability, oftentimes by another name. So previous, the landlords had a get-out-of-jail-free card in the state because they could say, it's not you, it's your voucher, I just don't take vouchers. But now, you know, or it's not you, I just don't take so security disability or child, I'm not going to like count your child support. So I took this map of Urbana from the U of I, and it is based on 2010 census data, but I don't think there's been a huge change since then, since the U of I updated this. Essentially, when you have source of income discrimination, you create segregation. And then segregation affects access to employment, education, food, and wealth, and your ability to have your, the value of your home go up once you're able to purchase. So essentially, what you can see is there is, there are community issues that happen from allowing source of income discrimination to exist. It's also important to note that most of the people using a voucher in the community are black, female head of household. And so when you allow source of income discrimination, you are allowing racial, racialized and gender, gender discrimination. Here's examples of discrimination straight from Hope Fair Housing, the enforcers. I don't take section eight. You have to have a job to rent here. We don't accept township rental assistance. We refuse all emergency. We don't work with the, the Housing Authority. They refuse to fill out paperwork. We don't want our space inspected. These kind of issues. Also, any difference in how people are treated? Oh, I'm going to do a background check on you because you have a voucher, but no, you know, I know your brother, so come on in, right? Or I charge voucher holders extra for the application, which we suspect is happening, but we're mostly working with voucher holders. Insisting the tenant buy extra insurance if you rent through a DV agency. Requiring a social security participant to prove they'll receive income for the duration of the lease. And then this issue, I think, happens quite a bit. We had, one of the participants spoke about this. She was denied based on her credit score, which was a pretty great credit score, and was higher than the stated credit score that was needed by this landlord. So she's pretty sure, and we, we are, sense that it's a source of income discrimination situation because she was told that she was denied based on her credit score. So is renting the housing choice vouchers now mandatory? This is, I think, the difference between mandatory and voluntary. It is not voluntary, right? You can't just voluntarily take the voucher, but it's not mandatory in that it is not the only criteria that you're allowed to look at. So housing, a, a housing choice voucher holder, you can't look at the fact that, at their source of income. You can look at their credit, you can look at their landlord references and other pieces as a landlord. So this is, there's been some information, disinformation amongst the landlord community particularly, that this is forcing them to take vouchers over and above other criteria. As long as they treat everyone equally and they provide, apply the same standards in every situation. Now, there is one example that I think is important, which is that it's Hope Fair Housing's opinion, and its opinion of the, the state champions of this, is that if you require someone to have three times the income of rent, that for a voucher holder, you have to look at three times their portion of the rent, not the entire rent. That would be treating them fairly. So if you're a general assistance participant and your rent is ninety dollars a month, which is about what it would be, then you would need to show that you get one hundred and eighty, which general assistance is more than that, and you would qualify. So you would, you can't, you can't be denied based on your income for general assistance if you're a voucher holder. That wouldn't be proper, because all general assistance participants make low enough that they would qualify for the lowest end. And that's what this slide is about, which is very complicated, and you can look at it in your slide deck. But this is a memorandum from the Director of Human Services, Human Rights and Ethics at the state level that basically says what I just said, which is, it is her, her opinion, and it's the state opinion, that you have to look at what the portion that the tenant is paying. So just to wrap up here, what this changes- So just to wrap up here, what this changes for renters. You can no longer treat types of income preferentially. You can no longer refuse to rent someone because of their occupation. You can no longer refuse to accept rental assistance. You can no longer refuse to rent to someone because they have a housing choice voucher, including refusing to complete paperwork or allow inspections. And at the state level, you can seek justice in court for the first time in Illinois, and, and landlord can face quite stiff penalties. That said, I will say that Hope Fair Housing shared, and I think this is really helpful to note, is that after the source-of-income, kind of the change in the bill went into effect the first of the year, they got a slew of discrimination complaints to hope, which is great because it means the word got out. And, and they have not yet had to make a filing at the state level. So what they've done is that they act as an intermediary, which our office does as well. The city of Urbana has done this as well, just to first communicate to the landlord that they are not in compliance with the law. And so far, with Hope Fair Housing, they've been, they've then complied with the law once it's presented to them. So that's why laws are really important, because you're able to look at and say, yes, this is what the law says. You need, you want to do business in this town, this is what it looks like, this is what's needed. So I think that we have a, you know, we have an additional tool. We have an additional tool in Champaign, which is great. We have additional tool at the state, which is great. We have layers of enforcement. I would encourage people to, to make use of all those layers of enforcement. And the entire slide deck is in your, is in your packet for your reference. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Before we go to questions, I would just like to add a couple of points from the cities. And since the presentation that was made by city staff on the 20th, they've continued to seek information. City staff attended two of the three workshops put on by the Fair Housing Coalition. They've reached out to neighboring communities, including the city of Champaign. They also sought legal guidance from the legal team at the Illinois Municipal League, which was actually very, very helpful. And I appreciate all the input and information that has been received during the council meetings and during public input. And it's clear, and I found this presentation especially helpful. And it's clear that the overall message and impact of this state law is that, and that's the message that it's going to be to our community and to our landlords and tenants, is that a landlord simply cannot refuse to lease an available housing unit solely on the basis of, of a person using a voucher. And that landlords still have the right to apply rental criteria, such as looking at credit checks or seeking references. But they have to treat every applicant and the same at every step during the application and evaluation procedure. And that's the key behind the new state law. That's always been the key behind our local ordinance, which continues to be enforced in the city of Urbana and of course will be going forward. So I appreciate all the extra information that's been provided. And we are thankful for the additional information. So, thanks. Any questions? Chandra?
So I've been thinking about this since you presented at the last town board meeting. You know how law enforcement have like sort of little sting operations with tobacco and alcohol, where they send in people to, underage people to try to buy tobacco or alcohol? When people come in to complain about a housing discrimination and maybe they don't have the exact right proof, is there an opportunity where you send in someone under the same, I guess, I don't know, kind of whatever, application, voucher, whatever, into that, that landlord, ask for, about a unit and see if the discrimination is real? Like someone who can, who is able to clearly identify and is trying to identify discrimination? And so you're, you're sort of getting that proof for, for that, that person? Is that a program or some sort of thing that can be set up between township and the city? And like we work together to try to, because we know, we don't exactly know which landlords there are? Or, you know, whatever the case, we need harder evidence, whether it's to find them or to train, or to educate them.
Yeah. Thank you for that question. One of the things that I'm requesting of the housing authority is a list of all the landlords that they do business with. And I have from the city, the rental registration list. We actually cross-reference and make sure people are registered with rental registration to receive rental assistance. And I think that, that list, looking at who isn't accepting vouchers, it doesn't say that they're, they're committing discrimination, but that's like a good first pass, right? And then I think that we did at the workshop request tenants to list landlords they thought that we should look into. And they didn't have to provide proof. They just said, here's, you know, these are landlords we think you should look into. Word, word of mouth or through our families or friends, we may have concerns about them. Hope Fair Housing is planning on doing testing in this community. They're hiring testers right now. We are sending participants who can help with that, with the testing. And that is, I think, honestly, the, I mean, we know this from the civil rights movement and we know it in this moment, and this is the new civil rights movement, that we need to do testing to uncover discrimination. So certainly township would, we've, we've made that recommendation. We'd be happy to work with the city on that. We will be working with Fair Housing, with Hope Fair Housing. And frankly, I think it's one of those things, it's like when we were on council and everyone screamed bloody murder that we weren't going to allow smoking in indoor places. And we just heard so much grief about it. And we passed an ordinance here, and then the state passed an ordinance, right? So it's similar, Urbana being kind of visionary, and we passed it. And actually, we, we, you know, I'm sure there were some businesses who had heavy smokers, I've been told. There's at least one that may have been, that may have been impacted. But I think we saw an increase of people who came to the table. We saw, we saw that a lot of the stories of what was going to happen once people followed the law, it created a different atmosphere. And so I think what we don't understand is how, how much social impact discrimination creates. And so it's not hard to treat everyone the same. It really isn't. It's not, you know, it, it isn't your family. It's, it's your business. And if your business is publicly facing, then you, you have to see black folks the same way you see white folks. You have to send them through the same application process as white folks, you know? You can't treat them differently. And I think we've just allowed this to go on for way too long.
So whenever the Fair Housing puts their testers out and you comb through that list of landlords, I'd be curious to see like some sort of report or something of, of the results of all of that.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I would encourage, you know, any council member wants to get more involved, if you want to, you know, be on our, our Fair Housing Coalition list. So we started a list and we're starting to do more coordination. We're also going to do a bus hack campaign. The housing authority has agreed to be part of that. We would welcome the city of Urbana's participation in that. I think it's really important for tenants to know their rights and for landlords to know their responsibilities and vice versa.
Yes, thank you.
One thing that was pointed out by Fair Housing, that it is important to document as much as you possibly can, whether it's texts or voicemail, or email, or preferably written. But, but having that documentation makes a much stronger case when filing a complaint. Sharice?
Hi. Okay, thanks Danielle for that. That's really good information. And I wanted to bring something to your attention in the sense that I have a constituent that his, it's not income discrimination, but he lives in one south, and he says that he's renewing his lease, but they want him to sign an addendum to not, uh, that he gives, he waives his rights to a class action. Is that also a discriminatory act?
I would very strongly encourage him to contact the tenant union. In fact, I always encourage anyone before they're signing a lease to contact the tenant union, but especially if they say any provision that doesn't seem to make sense. So I wouldn't, you know, it, it shows up in a lot of different ways. And also it may not be discrimination. It might just be illegal, or it might be, you know, so I think it would be useful for them to get a second look.
I was just wondering, you know, for, for someone to be forced to sign an addendum waiving their right to civil class action, that sounds to me like that would be somewhat discriminatory.
Well, my question is, if, if everyone is asked to do that, then it doesn't seem like discrimination. But it may be something that, if they're waiving their right, their right to something that they shouldn't. So I, you know, I think you'd have to look and see if the other folks who are renewing are also being asked to, especially those who might be students or might look or be different age or, you know, than the, than the person you're talking to. See if they're also being asked to sign that addendum.
Okay, so he needs to contact the tenants' union?
That's my recommendation.
You got numbers for tenants' union?
Is this a student's or?
He just, he doesn't say, he just says that he's, he lives in my, in my ward and he's been asked to, like part of his resigning the lease is that he signs that addendum, and he agrees to it.
Cutenetunion@gmail.com, and he should send, he should email the, the document that he's talking about so someone can look at it.
So that's Cutenetunion@gmail.com and attached documentation, just so that the video also has it.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks Esther. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So next up are going to be two presentations. I just wanted to ask if they'd be swapped, since Anna's kind of flows into Brittany's presentation. So I do want to, we are a site, a field site. I am a field instructor at the School of Social Work, as is Jasmine Hernandez and Lilia Garcia. Lily is in our, raise your hand, Lilia. She's also a field instructor and licensed social worker in our office. And we have three interns, actually, this semester. Two of them will be presenting. They are just about to get their master's degree in social work. And they, one of the things that is a requirement is that they do a research project. And we are in the process of analyzing all of our programs. So each program, we're doing a deep dive, like a three-month dive into that program that includes participant feedback. We look at, and so we'll do kind of overarching data collection. We do deep dive with interviews with participants, former participants and current participants in that program. And then we come with recommendations for improvement. And so our, you know, our plan is continuous evolution, continuous improvement of our programs. And we really thank Brittany and Anna for helping us with that. So these are, they're kind of final reports. And this also gives you a sense of where those programs stand, both through the eyes of our participants and through some of the data that we have in the office. And so I'll invite them, I'll invite Anna up first. She'll be presenting on an evaluation of Cunningham Township's housing programs.
Hi, everyone. Danielle already kind of took care of the introduction for me, but I'm Anna Howe. I'm a social work candidate, interning at Cunningham Township. I've been there since August, mostly working in our housing advocacy department. And as you said, I'll be presenting on our emergency family housing evaluation. This is just an overview of housing, of the housing programs that Cunningham Township offers. In the interest of time, it'll be in your slide deck. And I think a lot of you are familiar with them anyway. But for the record, they're right there. The evaluation of our family housing program kind of came in two parts. The first was more broad, where we reached out to all former housing program participants who had been moved from homeless status to permanent housing with the assistance of Cunningham Township. If you look at the supervisor's memo, that's 129 households served. That's as of this month. So 98 households were targeted when I started this evaluation in September, and 50 responded. And we inquired about things such as housing status, current rent status, like if they're current on their rent or behind, if they're behind on utilities, if they're food secure, any income concerns that they might have, and any other needs that they're experiencing. The purpose of the assessment was to identify past participants' current housing status, trends and ongoing needs, provide resources to people when possible, and inform new programs and policies. Some barriers we faced, I mentioned that we had about a 50% response rate.
Could you bring the mic closer to you?
Is it closer?
Just bring it closer so we can hear you and everyone else can hear you.
Yeah.
I can hear you, but I don't know if the people behind you can.
Is that better?
No.
Is this, okay.
There we go.
Sorry. I'm kind of a soft talker, so my apologies. So we had some issues reaching our former participants, and that's not uncommon with our, uncommon with our population. They experienced frequent phone shut-offs, changes in phone number, low email use, transients. And it's really difficult to get a good point-in-time snapshot of where former participants are at. Things frequently change in their world, and these calls were made across four months. So the biggest finding that we wanted to focus on was their current housing status. And the good news is that 88% of the former participants that we were able to speak with are currently housed. 68% are housed with a voucher or a subsidy. 18% were housed at market rate in a market rate unit. And then there was one individual, or 2% of the survey, that was housed, but their voucher status was unknown. 8% were precariously housed, which in this evaluation meant they had received an eviction notice. And two individuals had returned to homeless status. So while a lot of our participants had no existing needs and were doing well in their housing situations, 38, I'm sorry, yeah, 38% had no ongoing needs. There were about 42% of former participants experiencing food insecurity, 38% experiencing utility, being behind on their utilities. And then rental assistance and employment training were other significant needs. The racial makeup, we're going to go over some demographics of the people I spoke with, was just over 50% black. So you'll note that Champaign County is only about 14.5% black as of the most recent census data. This disparity is consistent with the state of Illinois's plan to prevent and end homelessness, which was published maybe a year ago now. And it shows drastic racial disparities in homelessness in certain parts of the state, including our county. This shows some sort of systemic barrier or barriers for our black population that a lot of our other racial populations are not experiencing. And then for this part of the evaluation, you'll notice that almost half of the households were only one person, which will be contrasted with the family shelter evaluation data that's more specific to families and obviously has a larger average household size. Major takeaways from this part of the assessment. The vast majority of households are still housed, but a major protective factor is housing subsidies that are not as available in our community at the moment as we would like them to be. Despite most households still being housed, many still experience some sort of support needs, like assistance with utilities or food. And having trouble communicating with former participants. We would like to maintain a more open communication line in the future. The second part of the assessment was specific to the emergency shelter that we operate. I'll run through a little bit more information for those who don't know about that program. The emergency shelter operated by Cunningham Township is for Urbana, Urbana families experiencing literal or HUD homelessness. We get our referrals from the school district or crisis nursery. Although we've had an emergency housing program for families for a few years now, the new properties purchased by Township in August 2021 is what this evaluation specifically looked at. And since that time, the waitlist has varied from between zero families to seven. Up to eight is our maximum capacity in individual units, for one-bedroom units and for two-bedroom units. We employ a housing-first model, which is a philosophy guided by the belief that people need basic necessities like food and a place to live before attending to anything less critical, such as getting a job, budgeting, or attending to substance abuse issues. And the program includes intensive case management with weekly goals to support or find housing. And the ultimate goal of the program is to achieve long-term sustainable housing. Uh, and the ultimate goal of the program is to achieve long-term sustainable housing for families. The purpose of this assessment was to identify strengths, weaknesses, and post-exit trends, um, for this program specifically. We also wanted to compare how they, um, how they might differ from other township housing programs. And, uh, we wanted to include families that did not necessarily exit into permanent housing. We wanted to research some best practices and then also inform program policies and new programs. The evaluation included twenty-six families. The average size was three point four, three point five-four individuals. The average length of stay was just over eighty-six days. And it only included families that spent the majority of their time in emergency housing in the California units, so not in our hotel program. And we looked at length of stay, household size, uh, exit location, current housing status, and any ongoing needs. Uh, same barriers pretty much as with the first part of the evaluation. So the exit trend, so this is when families leave our program. Fifty percent exited into subsidized housing. Seven and a half percent exited into a market rate unit, so a much smaller amount. Eleven and a half left for transitional housing. One person or four percent went to stay with friends or family. Three, uh, families went to stay at a domestic violence shelter. One individual returned to homelessness, and there are three households, um, where we, we don't know where they exited to. Um, some more demographics about this group specifically, again disproportionately blacks, uh, seventy-three point one percent. Uh, about twenty percent whites, uh, not identifying as Hispanic or Latinx. And about seven point seven percent white also identifying as Hispanic Latinx. You'll also see that the heads of households are overwhelmingly women. Twenty-five out of the twenty-six households were, um, headed by a woman. Also, not necessarily surprising, but single-parent households, uh, made up the overwhelming majority of the, um, families that stayed in our shelter. Twenty-three out of twenty-six households were headed by only one person. And the other significant, uh, demographic piece was that ten out of twenty-six, um, households were headed by someone with a disability, and that's almost forty percent of all households being led by someone with a disability. Uh, where they are now, current housing status, forty-six point two percent are still securely housed. Um, all of those who are securely housed exited our program with either a voucher or a path to a voucher through, um, the Regional Planning Commission Family Shelter. Seven point seven percent are in transitional housing today. Fifteen point four percent are precariously housed. So in this sense, precariously housed is either doubled up or, um, uh, they've received an eviction notice. For those who are precariously housed, they exited, um, in mixed, um, circumstances, but DV played a role in two of those exits. And, uh, only one family is currently unsheltered, and that person exited, um, through a program termination. The immediate needs are pretty similar to the first group, so families are experiencing a lot of the same hardships as individuals who went through our programs with the, um, addition of baby supplies, which includes things like diapers, wipes, and formula. And there are a lot fewer families that reported not having any needs. So some internal strategies to address, um, what we found in the evaluation. We developed and have partially implemented an individualized service plan, so we can get better participant input and set clearer deadlines with our case management. Um, we're working with waitlisted households, uh, before they enter the program to help create those service plans and access non-housing services like vital documents, SNAP, Medicaid. Um, we're also in the process of developing a post-exit case management plan, so people can remain supported when they exit into their own permanent housing if they choose. Increasing rental assistance in order to help people who, uh, are currently in their homes but, uh, are at risk for becoming homeless. Danielle mentioned the sponsor-based vouchers for families that we will be able to give out. Um, and then some of the other needs, uh, the digital inclusion program that we have can help people with their tech literacy. Um, we're implementing regular feedback surveys so we can stay in touch with our former participants. We have a food assistance program, a utility assistance program for eligible Urbana residents. And then, of course, the Angel Donor Fund, uh, which meets needs not covered by other programs through, uh, private donations. And then we also have an employment program that Brittany will talk about, so it's not included here. And then external barriers, um, I think things that a lot of us are facing, um, like inflation, the increase in energy prices, uh, decrease in SNAP allotments. But for our participants in particular, the lack of vouchers, uh, in subsidized housing, that's now not as much of an option in our community. I'd really like to stress that most of our participants exited to subsidized housing, including all of those who are still housed, um, from the family program. Um, and then just a general lack of affordable housing in our county available to people.
Thank you, Anna. Each of the presentations is timed to be about ten minutes. So I know we're running a little bit short on time, and we have this and then one more item. I just wanted to give you a heads-up. Also, you're welcome to send any questions about the presentations to me, and I'll make sure that they get answered, so, since this isn't a time-sensitive issue.
Okay, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, make sure you speak into the mic.
Hey? My name is Brittany Tooten. I'm an MSW candidate at the University of Illinois, and I have been a social work intern with the Cunningham Township since August of last year. Um, and I'm giving a presentation on the evaluation of our Employment and Education Opportunities Program. So the purpose of this was just to identify reasons that may inhibit our participants from pursuing education, even if they had indicated interest with their initial application. We've seen that on our general assistance application, nearly forty-five percent of all applicants indicate that they are interested in pursuing their education. Um, we also wanted to do an evaluation of the program's ability to prepare our participants for the workforce, um, do an evaluation of our host site, and also identify areas of interest for host site expansion in the future, as well as assess the satisfaction level with Township and the support our participants have received from our office. So in our presentation, I'm just gonna go over a general background of the EEO program, go over the evaluation tools that I use to conduct this evaluation, as well as the evaluation results. So a general history, prior to the launch of our EEO program, Township offered a community work program, also known as the CWP. This program connected our community members with organizations to complete work hours. We partnered with organizations such as the Illinois Food Bank, the Habitat for Humanity, and Salt and Light. Um, these traditional program rules were halted during the start of the pandemic due to closures of businesses, due to health risks to our participants as well as the community. So EEO now, uh, GA participants who are not applying for SSI or TANF are placed onto this track to generate job skills and/or further their education in order to apply for more permanent work. Uh, this track participate, or this track requires participants to complete twenty-four volunteer hours at Salt and Light each month in order to keep their case open. Uh, following that first month of completed volunteer hours, participants are able to pursue education in lieu of their volunteer hours. Um, so currently, we have seventeen EEO participants as of last month, and to be have two participants pursuing their education. So to conduct this evaluation, I use two evaluation tools. We use the participant feedback survey and the self-assessment. The participant feedback survey, um, we looked at, we surveyed both current and former participants, and we collected information such as their most recent contact information, employment status, their current needs, um, an assessment of our host site, suggestions for improvement, and also an, uh, evaluation of our education program if it was applicable to them. The self-assessment looked at only our current participants that had at least one month of experience with our organization, and we collected, um, pretty much the same information, um, along with a more in-depth assessment of our, of our host site, their comfort level and growth with the EEO program, an assessment of township performance, and also suggestions for individual growth and improvement within township. So like the other evaluation project, we did have some barriers to data collection. Uh, to conduct this, to call, to conduct the data collection, I was given a list of fifty-six current and former EEO participants. And out of this list, I was able to contact thirty-nine. And I was able to complete the survey with fifteen current and former participants with the participant feedback survey. And I was able to conduct the self-assessment with six of our current participants. So when someone is approved for GA, they go through a case open. In the year two thousand and twenty-two, we had forty-nine case opens with the EEO program. And in two thousand and twenty-two, we also had thirty-nine case closures. Um, in this chart, we have the major reasons or for case closure. The number one reason, uh, for case closure is failing to submit a work schedule. When someone has a case open, the first requirement of them is to submit a work schedule with Salt and Light in order to keep their case open for that next month. The next reason for case closure was missing documentation following a warning. They do get one warning, um, to get that documentation turned in. If they don't, they miss that deadline the second time, their case is then closed. Um, and then the third biggest reason for case closure in two thousand and twenty-two was failing to complete their work hours. Once their case has been closed, a participant does, has up to fifteen days to reopen their case in a grace period. Um, so they can make up those lost work hours, submit their schedule or submit that documentation they're missing, and their case will be reopened. If they miss that fifteen-day window, they have to start the application process again. So when I was doing the participant feedback survey, I asked our participants what they, um, thought about their time working and volunteering with Salt and Light. And the majority of our, majority of our participants enjoy working at Salt and Light, but find the work inapplicable to the jobs that they want in the workforce. Um, so at the bottom here, I have two charts, and I asked, "Did you enjoy volunteering at Salt and Light?" And over fifty percent of our participants agreed that they did enjoy working there. Um, however, when we asked, "Did you learn any valuable skills you might be able to use in the future", um, only eighteen point two percent said that they did learn those skills there. So then I asked them, "If the Cunningham Township were to expand the options for volunteering, which of these following areas would you be interested in, if any?". Um, and even though the sample size is really small right now, we do have a kind of a, a general understanding of what our participants are looking for. Um, we hope to see, you know, get those wheels turning in the coming months. Um, so it looks like we had five participants say that they'd be interested in volunteering in maintenance or custodial positions. And then we had three say they'd be interested in culinary, cleaning, and hospitality as well. Uh, some other data I thought was very interesting, um, is that thirty percent of our survey participants stated that digital literacy was a barrier to them for entering the workforce. Um, another thirty percent said that transportation was a barrier for them to enter the workforce. And fifty percent said that health issues, including temporary and permanent, were an obstacle for them entering the workforce. And thirty percent of those listed that as the primary reason their last job had ended as well. So focusing more on the education track, um, as I mentioned earlier, a participant has to complete one month of volunteer hours with Salt and Light prior to having that work requirement removed for them. This allows for time to work on applications and allow time for discovery of interest. Um, and in the education program, they must be enrolled in at least one class per semester. A syllabus must be submitted at the start of the class. Their midsemester grades must be reported back, as well as their final grades. And the participant must re- maintain a passing grade of sixty percent in each course that they may be taking at that time. So during the participant feedback survey, if they had indicated that education was something they were interested in in their initial application, I asked them what barriers may face them into pursuing their education. Um, and the two top reasons that we've seen so far have been health issues and also anxiety about performing well in school. And then we also saw some really bright spots in the data that I, that we collected as well. So fifty-five percent of our surveyed former participants are currently employed. And then of those that were interviewed for this purpose, over fifty percent of those former participants have maintained one job for a year. Um, twenty-seven point three percent have held two positions in the last year, and then just under twenty percent have held three or more positions in the last year. And then this is from our self-assessment, just looking at an assessment of township from our current participants. Um, and then for this self-assessment, all of the questions were asked on a scale from one to five, one being a negative response, five being a very positive response. Um, so I asked, "How would you rate your experience with Township on a scale from one to five"? Um, we had two very positive responses, two slightly positive responses, one neutral response and one slightly negative response. And then when we asked, "I got what I needed from Township", we had four very positive responses, one slightly negative response, and one negative response. And what we can draw from this so far, we do want to continue to collect more data to see a genuine trend here, but sometimes Township is unable to address a specific need that is needed immediately. So we're hoping to be able to address it in the future as we move forward with their cases. So in summary, our participants have enjoyed volunteering with Salt and Light but are interested in working in other areas in order to broaden their horizons. Um, and then forty-five percent of our applicants have identified interest in pursuing their educations. We want to work further into identifying how we can better support them in completing that goal. Um, and we also want to address the turnover rate for the EEO track and maybe consider incentives in the future. Um, and then it seems so far that we can tell from our current participants and from our past participants as well that, um, our community enjoys working with Township, and they do feel supported by Township. So our next steps looking to the future are we want to expand our host sites, um, explore and identify the root cause of health issues and anxiety surrounding performance in work and in school, identify ways to build confidence in our participants, and then continue, um, receiving feedback from our participants via the self-assessment in order to increase the sample size and find genuine trends in our data. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany.
Can we ask?
I think in the interest of time, if you can email questions.
Okay.
Thank you. Very useful information, though. Last item on the agenda is Resolution T two thousand and twenty-three dash zero four dash zero zero four R, which is the resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Urbana for Bridge to Home, filling the gaps in local homeless and housing surveys. And this is the ARPA agreement.
So I think this is part one of a two-part, so it's before Town Board. If approved tonight, it will go to the city council, so you get to, you get to take two swipes at it. Um, uh, it's, um, you know, we could also do a joint meeting if that makes sense. But I went ahead and put it on the agenda. I have been back and forth with RPC staff to get some clarification, and we're ready to move forward on our end. Uh, there's a resolution before you that basically authorizes me to sign the intergovernmental agreement, which is attached. Um, I think, um, the question was given that the scope, uh, I think it was fif- fifty-five percent of the request was funded, is, is proposed to be funded. Therefore, the request was what scope, how do we shrink the scope? Um, so we're proposing to shrink, to basically look at, and it's also been helpful to, um, we had four grants in the works at the same time, so just trying to line up all those pieces has been challenging. Um, so we have more clarity at this point. Uh, we'd like to focus on emergency housing and homeless prevention through rental assistance. So essentially, um, and our project completion date would be, um, the end of the ARPA, date twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-six, the last date that we could, uh, we could submit. Um, so looking at the six hundred fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars, fifty-five percent of that, what we have done is, um, we're requesting, uh, two hundred and ten thousand one hundred and thirty-one in personnel. This will be for rental assistance application processing, and I want to emphasize that it's temporary staffing because we are increasing the amount of rental assistance we're gonna move. So we can't do that without staff, like, most of what we do is vetting applications. Um, the money part is the easy part. The hard part is the, is the staffing part. So we're gonna, if we're, we're, I'm proposing that we shrink the direct financial assistance, the three hundred thousand, for two reasons. One, we didn't get as much as we asked for. Second, um, I'm glad- Second, I'm glad to see you, you funding immigrant, as council, funding the immigrant partners. And as a result of that level of funding for our immigrant partners, we feel really comfortable with three hundred thousand, because you're moving money instead of those other organizations for rental assistance. So, so I've tweaked the personnel amount that we will need for that. And the emergency housing case management, and I know this was in our original application, but I think our application was fifty-five or sixty pages, so you may have not seen it. We're specifically requesting that the ARPA dollars help us make, meet our ESG match. So the state of Illinois Emergency Solutions Grant, it's a great grant, except that dollar for dollar, every dollar that the state gives us, we have to spend a dollar of either some other grant money or our own money on literally homeless families, not on general rental assistance or, you know, homeless prevention. It has to actually be that the same criteria for homelessness is applied in both instances. It is challenging for us, as it is for our partners, to do that hundred percent match. That's one of the reasons why we actually have a hard time finding organizations in the community to pursue ESG funding. And in past years, we haven't even gotten our full allocation at the county level for the county as a whole, because we didn't have enough organizations. So Cunningham Township has stepped up to be an ESG fundee. We've done a lot with what we've had. We will continue to find various grants to make that match happen, so this is not a one-and-done situation. But we would, we requested specifically personnel costs, so that meets our match with our emergency housing program. So that would pay for emergency housing, either at the properties or in the hotels for Urbana families. The facilities piece, I think we, we're asking for a hundred and forty-eight thousand seven hundred and seven. You can read here, but basically it's really focused on energy efficiency and security. Those are, all of our requests are related to that. It would also pay for some of the utility costs, only a portion, they're quite high, and accessibility renovations to serve homeless residents. So we've not yet moved forward with that piece, but as soon as we get the grant approved, then we'll be putting that out to bed and be looking for contractors to help us renovate. And then, like I said, the three hundred in direct financial assistance. What I would ask you to do, just because, you'll see the project budget and anticipated timeline is blank. If you are comfortable with approving this this evening, I would ask that you basically approve with the understanding that we would bring the budget and anticipated timeline to the city council. My instructor is out for the week, and there's a lot of, I just got recent information from RPC staff about how to fill out that chart. So we'd like, so basically, the next time you see this as council, you'll see that timeline filled out. But the dollar figure would not change, and the categories would not change. With that, I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Mary Alice.
So if I understand correctly, so right now we have approximately two hundred thousand for staff and three hundred thousand for direct rental assistance. And what I heard you say in terms of the ESG funds is that two hundred and ten for the staff, would in addition to being able to distribute the three hundred thousand in rental assistance, would allow you to meet your match at the state for the ESG program, is that correct?
Yeah, portion of that. I think I'd have to look at my budget. I think seventy thousand of that is to meet our match. And the rest is to pay for staff over multiple years of distributing the additional rental assistance that will be coming through our office.
We'll be hiring either temporary or permanent staff to see this program to fruition.
Correct. So we will see, and I'm, I'm looking at how I'm going to shift staffing, so I won't, I don't have the how I will do it. It will, but basically it will be temporary capacity increase. It will be a temporary increase of capacity within township that would allow us to process. See, what we usually have is about, you know, we started at a hundred thousand dollars a year in rental assistance. So we're doubling that every year for three years. And actually, it'll be about, it'll be about four years. So we're almost doubling it for four years. We did, just for the record, if you look at the details of our budget, we're going to taper, so we believe the rental assistance, because it's COVID-related, we believe the rental assistance will be higher and then taper off over the years. So yes, it would pay for that temporary capacity building within township to process basically what is double the rental assistance.
All right, thank you. Just to clarify, what will happen at Town Board tonight is the resolution authorizes you to sign the agreement, and then that will come to city council for final approval for expenditure of the funds.
Correct. So once council approves, and it will have the schedule at that time, then it'll come back to me and the city administrator, and we'd both sign at that time. So I'm, we're just doing our piece first.
Any other questions? Motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution T dash two zero two-three dash zero four dash zero zero four R, a resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Urbana for a bridge to home, filling the gaps in local homeless and housing services, ARPA funds.
Second.
Moved by Shandra, seconded by Sharice. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
With no further business before the Town Board, we are adjourned, and we'll move on to the city council meeting. Okay, we ready? Okay. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, April tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes from three previous meetings, February thirteenth, February twenty-seventh, and March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval?
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Are there any substantive corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. There are no additions to the agenda, but there is a correction under Presentations and Public Input. Presentation number two should be examine Urbana, not imagine Urbana.
Add another addition to request, too. I'll move to add a discussion under new business, just quick discussion, checking in about housing discrimination. Recap a little bit about what we talked about and crisis pregnancy centers.
Could you repeat your first part?
Yes, I would like to move a discussion to add a, a discussion about checking in on housing discrimination and crisis pregnancy centers.
Yeah, you need a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? That passes. All right, we'll move on to Presentations and Public Input. We'll start with Presentations. First up, we have a proclamation for National Community Development Week. We have a number of members of the Community Development Services Department here, and so we'd like to I guess we have representatives of the Community Development Services Department. This is a proclamation by the mayor of the city of Urbana, Illinois. Whereas, the city of Urbana's neighborhoods are the foundation for providing a high quality of life for its residents. And whereas, the city of Urbana's Community Development Services Department has demonstrated a dedication to the revitalization of neighborhoods and production of affordable housing. And whereas, the week of April tenth through fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Association of Counties and the National Community Development Association to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program, and the Home Investment Partnerships, Home program. And whereas, the CDBG program provides annual funding and flexibility to local communities like Urbana to provide decent, safe, and affordable housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunities to low and moderate income people. And whereas, the Home program provides funding to local communities to create decent, safe, and affordable housing opportunities for low-income persons. And whereas, over the past five years, our community has received three million one hundred thousand dollars in CDBG funds and seven million six hundred thousand dollars in home funds. Now, therefore I, Diane Wolf-Marlin, mayor of the city of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of April tenth through fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, as National Community Development Week in the city of Urbana, and encourage all residents to join and recognize the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and the Community Development Block Grant Program and Home Investment Partnerships Program. All right, we'll move on to a presentation on the Examine Urbana introduction. And it will be by Andrea Rudy and Lily Wilcock, who are leading the effort on the comprehensive plan, and this is all part of the comprehensive planning effort.
Yes, we're pleased to present Examine Urbana to the city council tonight, which provides background on topics important to the development of the next comprehensive plan for the city. Examine Urbana is meant to educate, empower, and encourage public involvement in the next phase of our comp plan engagement. But first, I'd like to recognize my colleague Lily Wilcock, planner two in our Community Development Department. She has spent countless hours on this, and I'm going to embarrass her. She's spent countless hours meeting with staff and gathering input, researching data, and drafting the topic-specific chapters for Examine Urbana. Lily will be covering the various chapters in more detail here in a minute. But I want to emphasize how Examine Urbana is an invaluable, is an invaluable tool for the city that will not only be used for our next round of community engagement, for our new comp plan, but it'll also serve as a useful resource for the city, the city council, and the public. Lily has also used this incredible project as her capstone project for her master's degree in urban and regional planning, which she's completing this spring. Lily will be receiving her master's degree from the University of Illinois of Urbana-Champaign next month. Big, big accomplishment, and she's been doing this in tandem with all her studies, so congrats to Lily. We'd also, Lily and I both would also like to thank the many staff members that were involved in, in this whole process of Examine Urbana, providing data, reviewing, critiquing, and yes, we do take constructive criticism well, and editing the many drafts that we've had. And special mention particularly to Kevin Garcia, Sheila Dodd, and Carol Mitten for, for their help in, in this process. So Lily's going to walk us through Examine Urbana.
Yeah, and really, I'm going to walk through the beginnings of Examine Urbana, the, the first part and the last part, and then I'm, I'll talk a little bit about the structure, the scope of Examine Urbana, its purpose. So as you can see on the screen here, this is Examine Urbana. Oftentimes, with a comprehensive plan, you need to have some kind of background information for people to provide, you know, thorough and informed public input, and also make, make decisions that are really based off of the whole community, and maybe take our knowledge, our personal knowledge of Urbana, and expand that to, you know, the forty thousand people who live here and all the people outside of that who also interact with Urbana on a daily basis, a weekly basis, a monthly basis, when we're providing and thinking about the future of Urbana. So Examine Urbana is that. It's the background information for a comprehensive plan. It's informed by the people of Urbana, different stories that we wanted to highlight that, that touch on comprehensive plan issues, future vision issues, trends that we see in Urbana, and also really kind of highlight, put people first. So oftentimes, these reports can be a lot of federal-level data that can homogenize the actual picture of the people of Urbana and our issues that we see here and trends that we need to address in a comprehensive plan. We wanted to fix that and use as much local data as possible, even if it's much more challenging to use. And we really wanted to focus this on people and put trends and issues at the forefront of this instead of just the existing background. So with that, I'm going to talk a little bit about this introduction chapter. It's where I hope everyone started, if you've looked at Examine Urbana, because this introduction chapter really kind of goes over what its purpose is, the purpose of Examine Urbana. We're here to provide an introduction to comprehensive plan-related topics. It doesn't cover everything the city does by any means. And issues, it focuses on data and information about Urbana and the people of Urbana. And it also touches upon some of the misconceptions that we've heard and issues that, that people need to know more about when they're, they're talking about the comprehensive plan. We want to give people the power, the tools, to feel like they can put on their city planner hat and, and talk about, engage in city issues. Be a, a little bit more transparent about what sometimes, oftentimes, staff will see every day. What Examine Urbana is not, this is always a really important part of us trying to gently lead people into the scope. It's not comprehensive. If there's a particular topic that you're really, you feel involved with, more than likely, you might read that chapter, like arts and culture, or housing, or energy environment, and say, boy, I just wish there was, we got way more into geothermal. And I would agree, but this is really for your neighbor. Then that's what we're trying to pull into. We're trying to pull this out for, for people who are not as, as aware of, you know, bike accessibility or food accessibility, and for them to be engaged in this as much as touch on a lot of the different things and that. And that's also just being respectful of, of everybody's time as well. This is already kind of a big ask on a big website. It's shorter than a PDF, but it might be still pretty bigger than a normal website. And so it's not a technical report on national population or national economic trends, though we do kind of touch on some of the effects. It is so important, if you are looking at Examine Urbana, to wait for the page to load before you start scrolling. It's against human nature, but it's really important. And if you ever feel like the website gets stuck or frozen, it's the first couple times that you load it, your, your web browser might have to be caching or saving that information as it loads. You gotta hit refresh. This is all kind of hit home a little bit more in a silent two-minute video that covers tips on how to use it. I'm not going to go over this video, but you, you know that it's there. And then there's, there's three other sections in this introduction chapter. One kind of going over what a comprehensive plan is, how Urbana's plan works with state statute, but also horizontally across the city and with other communities. There's an overview of Urbana, which just covers some really high-level trends. And then there's just, you know, brief, next slide, please click on the next chapter, kind of highlight. This is actually, a hundred years ago, we had really affordable electric train travel. This is Homer Lake, and you could go to downtown Urbana. And so then you see the next chapters, you can go all the way through. Andrea and I and, and numerous other staff will be coming in the following weeks to going over over, in brief presentations, some of the highlights of those chapters. I'm going to skip to the 2005 comprehensive plan. It's kind of the bookend to, here's the comprehensive plan, here's comprehensive plan issues, background information for Examine Urbana, and then the 2005 comprehensive plan. Now, many of you have already seen the 2005 assessment document. Our staff did a lot of research and dug really deep into trying to find out what was done, what was done well, what didn't happen well, and what we can learn for the next comprehensive plan. But we did try to pull a lot of that information up and try to do it as visually as possible to about, from that assessment document into here. And you can see, there's a little bit about the planning process and its history in 2005. It's very brief. And then the breakdown, the structure of the 2005, how one, some person would pick it up, pick up the document and read it and make sense of it, some of the most important elements, like mobility map. And then there's also a section, which you get through that, and you can really see the lessons learned, the things that we'd like to improve upon for the next comprehensive plan, where we talk a little bit about what we'd like to do in order to make this better. And if I was at home, I would watch, let that video completely load, I just, for the record. You should do that. Crucial. So we'd like it to be, and I'll just recap this really quickly briefly. We'd like the next comprehensive plan to be community-wide in its vision and focus, not get into a couple of neighborhoods. It just doesn't serve those goals and objectives well. It didn't serve it well in the last comprehensive plan. We would like it to be more holistic and touch upon many of the things that the comprehensive plan is going to, how it's going to be used in many numerous documents across the city. And we'd like to come back and evaluate it, set up metrics for it to track, and report on those metrics and what we're doing, and then strive to update it more regularly. That was what 2005 was like. I was in high school. You can tell, there's some little bits about that. The city's new comprehensive plan will really include equity and sustainability throughout the plan. That was something that kind of got shoehorned into a couple of different services and infrastructure goals and objectives in the 2005 plan. And we really think that that's the kind of stuff that the city did really well in the last 20 years, and we'd like to keep doing that and, but be more intentional about And that the comprehensive plan will be easy to read and accessible. So we tried, we strive to try to take the city jargon out of Examine Urbana as best as possible, to include more people and invite more people into using this information. It doesn't matter who your background, educational level, everybody would have a struggle to use the language that sometimes we get in the habit of using every day, and try to just open up that audience more to people who maybe never engaged in city planning. And that is it. We'll be back next week.
And share with your friends, your neighbors, et cetera. We want as many people to read this as possible. A lot of work went into this. There's great information. Everybody's going to learn something from it, even if you are an expert on the environment and sustainability or arts and culture, everybody's going to learn something that they didn't know. And so Lilly's done a great job pulling this together, and, but the main thing is, we want people to read it before our next exercise that we do with the comp plan, which is going to be an exercise, an interactive exercise, that balances trade-offs between, if you make this decision, what happens here on the other side. So look forward to that in the summer, but in the meantime, yeah, please enjoy Examine Urbana, share it with your friends, and we will be doing, as Lilly said, weekly brief updates on each of the chapters through May 15th.
Thank you. We have time for a couple of questions, Grace.
Thanks so much for the presentation on this. I'm sorry if I missed it, but could you remind us how we find this? This website seems hard to find. Is it all publicly available? Is there still a login required and things?
No, there's no login required or anything. Examine Urbana, you just have to, it's examine.urbanaillinois.us. So it's the city's website, but instead of www, it's examine.urbanaillinois.us. It will be on the city's website soon, like I was.
Will there be a link from the homepage?
Yes, that's what I, that was the words.
Thanks for asking that, Grace. We neglected to say that. We did send a press release out on this last week, and we also sent an email to each of the council members with that link too, if you ever can't remember it, but we'll get that distributed better.
And then to us and the public to review this, and then you said in the summer we'll have another?
Another round of engagement, that's right.
Thank you.
And we'll be getting dates out for those.
Chandra.
So this is, so there are pieces, so Examine Urbana is a phase of Imagine Urbana? Like Imagine Urbana is the big thing, and Examine Urbana is like a phase of?
The comprehensive plan is a big thing, and there's all these supporting documents underneath it. So there is a supporting document, Assessment of the 2005 Plan, there's the 2021 Community Engagement, 2021, and then there's Examine Urbana, which is background information for people to make decisions. And so then the next phase would be, you know, a public input, but it's pretty technical. There's technical issues that we're going to throw at you, and you have to kind of make those decisions and trade-offs. And so it's good to have this kind of information and have reviewed it that way. Why is the city asking me about this? Or why can't we do it all, you know? Is probably, I think, a common feeling or need, and then I think that you should have the tools or the information to answer some of those questions.
I would add, it's an integral part of the comp plan process, but it also is a wonderful standalone. I won't call it a snapshot, it's like a photo album of the city. So someone who's new to the community or wanting more information about the community, this is a lot of information in one place that gives a very nice picture of what the city is.
It really is a resource, you know, for staff, the council, the public, to be able to get information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go on to public input. If anyone wishes to address the Urbana City Council, please step up to the microphone and state your name for the record.
Hello, my name's James Miller.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
My name's James Miller. I'm actually residing in Thomasboro. I'm with Russ and Sharon Schaefer for the East University lot. Me and my family are the ones that own the Detail Shop. I'm the grandson. I just kind of wanted to give you guys a background on who I was and who my family is. I've been in business four years. I started from the ground up. I've gotten to the point from doing everything myself at home to taking over a building, bringing my wife in full-time, hiring a full-time person. We are growing. We don't plan on going anywhere but up. I want to keep growing and getting bigger and just help. We love helping the community, we enjoy helping everybody. Just kind of the thing we like to do. So I just kind of want to announce who I was and just kind of keep you guys' heads. I mean, we're not, I don't plan on moving in, and if it all works out, leaving in two years and something else coming in. It's something that's been in the family, it's going to stay in the family, it's something that I would like to hand down to my children, and he's only five. So it's not something that I plan on going anywhere anytime soon. I mean, this, I went from working for my grandparents, working for my dad in the garbage industry. I've done a lot with the community in towing and helping do things like that. I started my own business because I wanted to be my own boss, and I literally started from nothing, and I have grown to hiring, bringing my wife in, like I said, and another person, so I don't plan on going anywhere. Just kind of wanted to tell you guys that. It's kind of hard to put in a letter, so thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council? Yes, go ahead.
Hey, my name is Jonah Weiskopf. I just wanted to thank you guys. The, I believe you're approving a liquor license for an establishment I'm opening at 119 West Main Street later in a few months, and I'm super excited, and I just want to say thank you in that I think Urbana, I'm just very excited to participate in Urbana's arts and music scene. I think it's thriving, and it makes it a special place, so thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council? Okay, we'll move on to council input and communications. Any comments from council members? Okay, there's no unfinished business. Reports of standing committees. Councilmember Grace Wilken.
On behalf of committee of the whole, I would move for approval, resolution number 2023-04-007, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number seven.
I'll second.
Moved by Grace, seconded by Chandra. Any discussion? Grace.
I just had a question if there was, there were some things to add, but that's what was written here, right? I was just making sure there wasn't any other written presentation from my next?
You had additional information on the memo entitled Revised Fiscal Year 2023 Budget Amendment Number Seven.
Thank you.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
On committee of the whole, I'd like to move for approval, ordinance number 2023-04-009, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning map, R3/B1 to B2 at 714 East University Avenue, Plan Case Number 2470-M-23.
Sarah, second.
I'll second.
Moved by Grace, seconded by Jaya. Discussion. Grace.
I was wondering if there was any follow-up from last week, and just making sure that we had all of the steps in order, and I've been thinking about it as well, if you can help me understand this better, because this is coming to council just because of the change in zoning, right? Like if this had already been?
Yes, that's correct.
B2, and the use changed, the plan, is it the commissioner or?
No, the zoning administrator.
Zoning administrator, thank you.
Yes, that's me.
Thank you. So you can, like, if this had already been B2, you could have changed the use to allow the auto detailing in B2 if it had already been zoned that, is that right?
Well, I would, so I would make a formal zoning interpretation on how we would treat that use, since it's not in the table of uses.
And that wouldn't come to council, that's just up to the commissioners?
Well, that, sorry, to clarify, that's up to the zoning administrator.
Administrator, yes.
Which is me, but we do have a process in place for appeals if somebody did not agree with my decision.
Thank you. And then was there any more to the general process, or that kind of sums up the thing here?
I think that sums it up.
Okay. And like I said last week, I think that this absolutely makes sense. I have no problem with this use, this rezoning. I just, what I'm getting at, I don't know if I expressed that well last week, was just the idea of a concern where, to me, this seems like it fits in the vehicle one instead of the personal services, and I understand that you are the one with the authority to determine that. And I was just bringing up the general concern of kind of like, where does that line stop? Like, what if we say we can allow a liquor store or a strip club slash liquor store that's not exactly in the uses there in like residential business, or it's kind of where is that line of discretion? I guess that's a bigger part of the way the system's kind of set up.
I'm sorry, was there a question there?
No, I don't think so. I think I'm just expressing to council members my concern, and yeah, yes, rhetorical question of where is that line? If you have an answer, feel free to respond, but not required.
I mean, typically, we don't have to get to a line because most of those uses are already in the table of uses, so it's just, if there's a use that, you know, that wasn't around when we wrote the table, then it's up to the zoning administrator's interpretation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mary Alice.
Let me expand a little bit. You had mentioned the zoning administrator makes the interpretation in terms of the best fit. If the applicant disagrees with that zoning determination, they can apply to the zoning board of appeals. The question is, if the community disagrees with the zoning designation, is there a process to then ask for a reevaluation?
I'm going to defer to our city attorney on that one.
Thank you, councilmember. Off the top of my head, I think the answer is no. I'd have to go back and look through that process to see that, but I think typically, when you talk about these kinds of processes, it's the direct parties involved with it. Realistically, would have the ability to either challenge it, accept it, you know, or whatever that next step may be. It's not necessarily built around a community stepping up and saying, hey, we don't like that, but certainly we can look at it and provide a more definitive answer, I think, out of the zoning code itself, whether that's a possibility.
It's my understanding that there is no way for the community to actually appeal the decision. I'm just thinking of previous cases in which there wasn't an existing category for something, and it's been, you know, this is, we're going to use this category because it's the closest fit, so to speak.
I mean, we could always do a text amendment to add a specific use to the table of uses if we wanted to have, you know, more certainty.
Okay, thank you. Chandra.
So will this be auto detailing be added to this table of uses under this B?
No, it would not be. We'd have to do a separate case, a text amendment that would go through a plan commission and then to city council.
So it's just, this is a special case because it was a split zoning thing, correct? Because other auto detailing places are zoned regular business or whatever, right?
There are. I'm pretty sure all other auto details are in zone B3, possibly. I think we have some in B4, but those are non-conforming.
Grace.
Grace, I have one more. Is there a process for making something that legally non-compliant or non-conforming? Are they usually grandfathered in, or is there a way to like, in this case, could we say like, okay, you're in B2 legally non-conforming, rather than saying this is categorized as a personal service?
I'm not sure I totally follow the question. Typically, so if something's legally non-conforming, it's something that was allowed, and then the zoning ordinance was changed so that it is no longer allowed in that zone, so it takes on the legally non-conforming status. We can't, we couldn't make something legally non-conforming like right now when they're establishing it.
Thank you. I think that answers the questions. Thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll? Or Mary Alice? Discussion, yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to the applicants who are in the back of the room, and all this discussion that we're having right now is not about your particular parcel, it's more about the process. So that, I just wanted to clarify that for those of you who are attending. I'm the one who kind of raised a little bit of concern about parking and so forth, and I understand that the property owners want to stay there long-term and so forth. I don't really have a problem with this. I think it's an interesting case in terms of designating different uses that don't exist, which is a longer conversation, a broader conversation, but doesn't particularly apply to this case, so. I'll be voting for this. Thank you.
Grace.
Thank you, Mary Alice, for reiterating that. I'll just also echo, I agree from my own perspective as well. This is just the process stuff, support the change here, and I understand the idea and appreciate this company doing business in Urbana, and hopefully this zoning change and combining your lots makes things a little bit easier.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I also just kind of wanted to take a minute and say, I think it's worth noting, at least for myself, I didn't have questions about the particular decision. I think, you know, when we look at that and look at the evolution of our zoning over time, we have vehicular sales and services under one designation. There's nothing to say that they couldn't belong under another designation as well, and I feel like that piece was getting mixed, missed, right? Of like, yes, we have a category that, you know, this could fall under B3, but there's nothing to say it couldn't fall under B2, we just don't have that category. So I think, you know, as we're raising these questions and having these conversations, it can suggest that staff made the wrong decision, where I think there's a very logical trail that can be followed to see how we ended up with this particular decision. I think that's worth noting as well, that staff put a lot of time, and while there are questions to kind of make sure we understand why something ended up where it did, that it's also worth noting that staff has already done that process and made the decision based off of their expertise as well. So wanted to thank the staff for their work on this as well.
Ready for a roll call, please?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Also, on behalf of committee of the whole, I'd like to move for approval, ordinance number 2023-04-011, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section Three dash forty-three, maintaining the number of Class A liquor licenses for Synesthesia LLC, doing business as Gallery 119 West Main Street, Urbana, Illinois.
Second.
Moved by Grace, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? James.
Yeah, I just want to say what a pleasure it is to be voting on things where businesses are expanding, are coming back in, in our city, and I appreciate the, the person who's opening this business to, to bring some life back to Main Street.
And I can say we all had to look up what the word synesthesia meant. Well, speaking for myself and my staff, anyway. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Lastly, on behalf of committee of the whole, I present ordinance number 2023-04-010, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section Three Forty-three, increase in the number of Class H liquor licenses for VD3 LLC 1001 West Killarney Street, Urbana, Illinois, for approval.
Second.
Moved by Grace, seconded by Mary Alice. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Completes the committee of the whole business. Reports of special committees, there aren't any. Reports of officers. I have a couple of announcements. One, we, we received very good news at the end of last week. The city of Urbana has been awarded two ITEP grants. These are the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program grants through the Rebuild Illinois program. They total two and a half million dollars. It's for two projects. The first is for construction of the shared-use path parallel to Florida Avenue between Lincoln Avenue and Race Street. This is part of the bigger Florida Avenue construction project. So this is, this is huge. We've been working on this for many, many years. And it was a wonderful collaboration between the Regional Planning Commission, the MTD, and the city for writing the grant, and then support from our community partners, particularly the University of Illinois. We had strong support from President Colleen, from Chancellor Jones, from Facilities and Services to construct this path. And it's going to be a major enhancement of connectivity between campus, Orchard Downs, south to, to South Urbana, and then on east. So we look forward to that construction, I believe, starting next year. And then the second grant is for another shared-use path, again, supporting bike and pedestrian connectivity, and that's in east Urbana. And that is along Baker's Lane and hooking into west, eventually into Washington Street, and connecting the neighborhoods in east Urbana to Washington Street, the Health and Wellness Center, and the bike path there. So this was just wonderful news, and we're grateful to the governor and the community partners who helped support this project. The second announcement is, next week, Carol Mitten and I will be in Washington, DC. We're traveling there with Champagne County First. This is our annual lobbying trip on behalf of Champagne County First, which is a coalition of cities, villages, community partners like the U of I, Visit Champagne County, Champagne County Economic Development Corporation. We establish a list of infrastructure projects that benefit the county, and then visit our elected officials in Washington, DC. Past years have involved road projects, railroad overpasses, the mapping of the Mohammed Aquifer, sewer, sewer project for a storm, or a treatment project for a small village in Champagne County. And for the city of Urbana, the, the project we will be focusing on this year is seeking support for eleven million dollars in, in the grant that we've applied for to reconstruct Florida Avenue. So this timing of the shared-use path couldn't come at a better time. The other thing I want to mention, you say, you might wonder, well, what, how effective are you when you're doing this sort of thing? One of the projects that all of us in the coalition have supported has been the mapping of the Mohammed Aquifer. That, you know, is the sole source of drinking water for well over a half million people in central Illinois. And it's becoming increasingly important for us to protect both the quality of the water in the aquifer and the quantity. And in order to do that, you have to know what it looks like underground. And we have a very rough map of it right now. Well, there's new technology being used in Europe, actually, for a number of years, but the geological survey here is now using it. It's H10. It's helicopter-born technology that really creates like an MRI of the aquifer. It's the best way to explain it, I guess. And the entire cost of that is close to maybe fifteen to twenty million dollars, latest estimates. So you do a little bit at a time. Well, after three or four years of repeatedly going to Washington, asking for federal support for this, because something like this, we just don't have the funds locally. We, there was a congressional earmark last year. Senators Durbin and Duckworth were very instrumental in that. And the first million dollars was allocated, and that work is being done now. And then the Champagne County allocated another five hundred thousand dollars in ARPA funds for mapping the aquifer. So there's one and a half million dollars, which will pretty much cover most of Champagne County aquifer, there are portion of the aquifer. But it extends all the way over to the Illinois River, close to St. Louis, so there's a lot left to cover. So anyway, we, this kind of repeated, organized, persistent visiting of our elected officials in Washington is paying off, and we're hoping that we continue to see results from that. So we'll be there early next week, and we'll not be at the meeting next week. Okay, that's, anyone else have any other announcements? All right, we'll move on to new business. There is none. And then there's discussion item, housing discrimination and the Crisis Pregnancy Center.
Uh, thank you for supporting this addition tonight. It was a little impromptu. I was just hoping that we could have just a little bit of discussion, just checking in about two items that I feel like we've had some previous discussion on. I think some staff and executive have been looking into some issues, and if we could just kind of touch base on a next plan from here. Those two things being the CPC's Crisis Pregnancy Centers and the housing discrimination, and particularly the housing discrimination in light of some of our conversations we've been having in town board. For anyone else who's interested and hasn't been watching those meetings, there's been some other good discussion. So I don't know if we could just kind of reiterate and maybe get a check-in from executive and staff and share other council member thoughts.
Sure. I can start with the housing. As I mentioned in the town board meeting, since the March twentieth presentation by city staff on the new Source of Income Protection Law, staff have continued to seek and receive information on this top, topic. They attended two of the three workshops held by the Hope Fair Housing Center. City Attorney Dave Wesner and Human Rights and Equity Officer Carla Boyd attended both of those. These workshops were put on by the Fair Housing Center, the Illinois Coalition for Fair Housing, the Regional Planning Commission, Cunningham Township, the Champagne County Continuum of Service Providers to the Homeless, and the Housing Authority of Champagne County. And I will say, and I know Braden Belcher and Sheila Dodd have been attending the meetings over the past months as well. So staff has been represented at all of those meetings. Staff also reached out to a number of neighboring communities, including the city of Champaign, and we received additional guidance from the Illinois Municipal League Legal Department. And all of those things, plus the input that we've received, particularly from the tenant union township and others, have helped clarify and answer a lot of the questions that we had going into this. I, I want to, I think the three messages we want the community to know is, number one, that we have a human rights ordinance in place. We've had it since nineteen seventy-nine. We are enforcing it. We will continue to enforce it, including Source of Income Protection is one of those areas of enforcement. And again, it's very important when people, people can bring a verbal complaint, they can bring a written complaint, but it's hard to prove if you're just operating on a verbal complaint. Becomes, they, you know, the two parties, words against the other. So it's always best to have as much written documentation that a complainant can bring to the case. But we will work with them, no matter what. And it's clear that as our own ordinance, plus the January first, the law that went into effect January first, is that a landlord cannot refuse to lease an available housing unit simply because the rent will be paid with a housing voucher, such as Section Eight or a tenant-based rental assistance. That's, that is the, the law in a nutshell. If a prospective tenant meets all the rental criteria, intends to pay with the voucher, the landlord cannot refuse to rent. And at that point, the landlord is required to enroll in the voucher program in order to accept the funds, and there's a process then for that. It doesn't mean that the landlord gives up all rights to apply rental criteria, such as checking references, or asking for a credit check, or verifying information on an application. That absolutely still can be done. But people, landlords have to treat all applicants the same throughout the process. And that's the key to this new law, and that's been the key to our housing, or to our own ordinance. And I just want to assure everyone that we will, the city of Urbana will continue to work with the community to ensure that all people have equal access to clean, safe, and decent housing. Yeah?
I'm curious as to what IML had to say about it, and if any other communities in, I guess, the state, but if they referred to any other communities having, um, of, like, it's a vague interpretation to them of, of the new law.
The words that IML sent to us are basically the words I just said to you. I, I, it was very, they were very, they were very straightforward. I, I appreciated their, their assistance in this. Yeah, and Dave may have some further information.
No, I was just gonna add, because as, as the mayor alluded to, we contacted other communities, and, and I think for a couple of things, I was asked to contact Champagne Legal Department on, on these. And, and what I got back from Champaign was they're dealing with it exactly the way Urbana is, which is, it's not necessarily that it's vague, but I think they're treating it the same as we would, which is, if there's a complaint, we will process it just like any other complaint to discrimination, and, you know, require their landlord or a property owner to provide whatever, you know, response or defenses they have to it, and just kind of follow that process along. They also indicated that they're hopeful that the Attorney General's Office will put out some information about how they perceive this new statute. And, and as you recall, the, what the state did was literally just insert the word "source of income", and I think they had a definition for "source of income" into the state law, so they didn't elaborate on that. And so I think even for Champaign, they're hoping that if the AG's office puts out some helpful information, I guess, to, to help all of us, including the state, I guess, if they weren't sure exactly how they would process them once they put this into place. But that's how, you know, Champaign's waiting for it as well. They will take on cases also. The perspective they've got, just like we have, is depending on the circumstances, some may end up getting referred to the state, I think, in terms of the overall involvement and whether or not the, the individually best served by actually having that heard by the state versus locally. So again, I just want to indicate Champaign's dealing with these the same as the city of Urbana.
Carol, did you have more information on the incentive programs that are available? Do you remember what some of those were?
There's, excuse me, there's a statewide program that will allow, I believe, up to nineteen percent reduction in the assessed value of a property that includes that, where there are vouchers that are accepted or being applied. That depends on how much of the property is devoted to housing that's being funded by a voucher. At the local level, there are a number of incentives that the Housing Authority has recently created. One is just an outright incentive to basically kind of get people involved in the program. There's another incentive, they all have names, and I'm sorry, I, I don't know what they are off the top of my head, but one is, they will pay up to two months' rent. If you have a, a housing, if you have a tenant that's, that's paying with a voucher and that tenant leaves, and they would like you to continue in the program and hold that open for another voucher holder, they'll pay up to two months' rent for you to, to hold that unit. And there's also a pool, I'll call it landlord risk mitigation pool. Sheila's nodding at me, I'm getting that one right. That if your property is damaged by a tenant who is a voucher holder, they will pay up to twenty-five hundred dollars in, to repair any damages that are caused by that tenant. And I think that's, I don't know if that's a year, or, I don't know how, how, if it's twenty-five hundred dollars over the life of that unit, or, or what. But I do, since I, since I have the mic for, for just a second, I, I do want to say, when we talked to Lily Walton and the folks at, at the Housing Authority, what I took away from that conversation was that they're taking a really positive approach about it, as opposed to, which, which I, which I think is, is the best approach for everyone to take, which is, it's, it's not, creating animosity and adversarial relationships between tenants and landlords is not going to lead to good results in the long run, and that's why they created these incentive programs, because they want to be partners with the landlords, and I think that's the approach that we want to take too. And, and I think what's missing right now is, if, if we had guidance from the state, then I think landlords, we could be educating landlords with sort of the official statewide position on what this new law really means. I think that's a missing piece. No one has undertaken a kind of global effort to educate landlords at this point.
Go ahead.
I know that they're the Champagne County Housing Authority incentives, but is the city doing anything to sort of help push those incentives out to the landlords so they know that they exist?
We, we haven't done that yet, but I think that's a great idea. I mean, the first that we really learned about them in a, in a comprehensive way was when Carla made her presentation just a couple weeks ago. But yeah, that's, I mean, that, that's really good. And, you know, I was thinking about it, if we had, if we had known more when we were doing ARPA, that could have been, that could have been incentives that, that, an incentive program that we created too. That doesn't mean that we can't do that in the future, and then we give some thought to that.
Chris?
So, without a specific applicant, will the city of Urbana be enforcing, or a more merciful version, educate, a landlord who's advertising, they don't take vouchers or Section Eight, and they're advertising it in their, you know, advertisement for the unit? So will we still be enforcing, so to speak? What I mean by enforcing, stopping them from advertising like that?
Yeah, as far as I understand, I don't think we've ever not said that we would take those steps on that. And I think, and again, I, I don't want to necessarily speak for Carla, because she's not here, and she could elaborate on this herself, but in my peripheral kind of involvement from a ways back, Carla had indicated that one of her things that she really wanted to concentrate on was educating landlords, I think, because they just, you know, I guess I, I may be naive in thinking that they're not purposeful in doing that. But at the same time, I think it's more driven to the idea of compliance. Things like this in terms of, you know, potential violations of city ordinances are more driven, I think, that compliance is priority, because then you solve the problem upfront without having to wrangle with them on a regular basis long term, so.
Yeah, I think that's what I heard from Esther Pat repeatedly, was that once you inform the landlord what's going, what the law and what's going on, they, they're usually compliant, so.
I think the new state, I think the state law actually prohibits that. Prohibits advertising they don't take vouchers, so. Grace.
Thank you. Again, appreciate the discussion, and overall, I would still like to have a, another discussion with more preparation, as Edgy said, with Carla here, with our Human Rights and Equity Officer. Because what I see as a few things that still need to be addressed, resolved, clarified, would be the issue of the Housing Authority inspection. That was kind of the original thing here, and I think we need to clearly figure out if we can't require it, okay, then can we impose a fee if they choose not- if we can't require it, okay, then can we impose a fee if they choose not to, just because that's the only issue? I think we need to figure out more details about the Housing Authority inspection piece. Also, the issue of being denied an application and looking into it. The Human Rights Ordinance says specifically that there doesn't need to be an individual claim for the commission to look into it and investigate things. I appreciate, you know, the idea of education, but I think that there needs to be more teeth to it. We need to have actual fines, we need to have some actual meaning to this. We've had that list of places that have been known to advertise openly, that they don't accept vouchers. That list was submitted within the city for quite a while. I don't know if there's been a, you know, action on that, or if there's been an impact on addressing those things. And then also, again, the issue of investigating or testing some of these applicants, and if we get some data from some other partners, that would be really helpful. So I think this is a really important issue, and again, I really appreciate the discussion on it and looking into it, but I feel like we have a lot more things that we need to resolve clearly, as far as how or if we're going to enforce this, that I would still love to see at a later discussion.
Mary Alice?
So, one of the things that I did after Carla had presented, and also after Danielle and Esther came in, is I called Carla, just to ask her some questions, some follow-up questions, and one of the things that we talked at length about was the report that Danielle was referencing from 2019, I believe was the date, and when she first came on to this job, please confirm this with Carla, because this is my understanding of the conversation, when she went to the Human Relations Board, they said they really wanted her to investigate if that was still the case. Right, so she came on in 2021, and the report was, I think, 2019? And after she investigated, she says, this is no longer the practice. So the Human Relations Commission did really emphasize that report. I know that she worked on it for quite some time, and, and did some follow-up with that. So I just wanted to share that with council, especially since Grace, you just brought that up. But I do recommend talking directly to Carla, just calling her up and asking her some clarifying questions. I did ask Carla if she would be willing to write a memo, or an update, or something kind of giving a status of, of some of the questions that have come up, and, and the Human Relations Officer, and how she approaches different things.
And I, I need a little more information on the inspection. What question in particular did you have about that?
Yeah, my understanding was that kind of what sparked this whole discussion in the first place was the issue of saying, a landlord can't discriminate just because you have a Section Eight voucher, but we can't force them to do the Housing Authority inspection and certification to accept vouchers. Is that not the right understanding?
That's what the change in our understanding was when we got the advice from IML, is that if you actually get to the point where you have had a person apply, and you've taken them through the process that you put every prospective tenant through, and you get to the endpoint where it's okay, now, you know, let's sign, or whatever, and they say, I have a voucher, that the landlord is actually not under the law, correct me if I'm wrong, and this is what IML had indicated, that at that point, they must, as the mayor said, enroll in the program, and that enrollment includes the inspection. It includes all the things that are required. It includes either removing certain provisions from the, the lease, or understanding that those are unenforceable. There was one other thing, I can't remember what the third thing was, but basically, that, that's what IML advised us, was that that is no longer, we, we were under the impression that you couldn't force that last step, you couldn't force a landlord into that third-party agreement, and IML clarified that that is, at least as far, without other guidance from the state, that is part of the process. They must enroll in the program.
Yes, specifically, they said to accept Section Eight funds, the Department of Housing and Urban Development requires landlords to enter into the Housing Assistant Payment Contract, that HEP contract. This contract allows the funds to be transferred to the Housing Authority of Champaign County, which in turn transfers it to the landlord. So you have to enter that agreement at that point, after your tenant, your prospective tenant has passed all the criteria, or satisfied the criteria to your satisfaction. Chris?
So what I remember Lily Walton saying, and at, at the March 20th, is that she said that the, just, you know, to let landlords know, that the inspection standards for a housing voucher are almost less than standard city inspections. I mean, does everybody remember that? Okay, so just to kind of let the landlords know, hey, you know, it's not a big, it's not a, a rougher deal if that happens, if you're compelled to do that, so.
So, so to me, it feels like that takes that, that sort of voluntary word out of it, because if, if a person seeking to rent an apartment shows up with a voucher, you have to follow through with the inspection, or whatever, whatever else it takes to accept that voucher.
I think, just to put a, a kind of a fine point on it, because we're getting into the, into the weeds, I think that the issue is, it's voluntary until...
Someone requests.
Until you get to that endpoint where you've, where you've taken your applicant, and you've vetted them through your normal process, and then when you get to the end of that process, and it's just about how are you going to pay, that's when it's not voluntary anymore. But our understanding also is that no one is saying this is a mandatory program, unless those circumstances apply. So that's, that's, that's part of the, I don't want to say nuance, but that's part of the detail of this.
Keep your form of payment in your pocket, too.
As long as you, and the key is, as long as people treat all applicants the same through the process. Grace?
Thanks, just had one more thought to Chris's excellent point about this Housing Authority inspection not being a big deal beyond our typical inspections. And so there's also the idea just kicking around, you know, systemically, is there anything that we could combine with the city inspector inspecting rental properties? And like, by the way, you can also enroll for it, like, can we increase just the general number? Like, in an ideal world, if every available rental property was also enrolled to accept vouchers, like, would that make that process so much easier in Urbana? And so I don't, I don't know all the details, but I just don't know if, you know, like, our rental inspector could be trained by HUD standards to also inspect and kind of pre-certify, or say, if someone comes with you for a voucher, you've got this kind of, you know, pre-approval thing, that it could be even an easier process. So I was just wondering if there's even some ideas we could kick around, like, systemically to make some changes.
Okay, thank you. Mary Alice?
So, just to, what I heard last time when Lily was here, was that you have to get recertified every single time there's a new tenant. So you can't get, you can't say, okay, I want to offer this up. You have to wait for somebody to come with a housing voucher. The apartment has to be vacant for them to be able to go through and do the inspection, and then they get approved. But say it's the same apartment, and say James comes a year later, they have to go through the whole process again. So just, I, I don't think we can do the pre-certification, I guess is what I'm saying, but we can certainly share the, the Human Relations Ordinance, you know, at those types of things, and say, this is just kind of an FYI, we're reminding you that these are protected classes in the city of Urbana. So, I mean, that would be possible.
Just out of curiosity, how often do rental units inspected by city inspectors?
Once every 10 years.
It's on a three-year cycle, but I think, you know, with staffing changes, it's a little further out.
COVID slowed things down as well.
And Grace, to answer your question on the inspections, the HQS inspections are a requirement of HUD. They want to make sure that the housing meets the minimal standards, and we require it as well with our TBRA vouchers.
Any other questions? Grace?
I was wondering with that thought, if there was, if we're interested in kind of this, since there's two things here, kind of switching to crisis pregnancy centers, if, if we're exhausted with this topic, if there was any update on that item?
I can, if you may, and apologize, Councilmember, I know you'd asked for a written memo, I think, from my last kind of update on that, and I do apologize, I tended on getting it ready for today's meeting, had some home issues and some car issues, and so I wasn't able to get as far as I wanted to. I've got some of it done, I just couldn't get to all of it with those, but did a couple of quick checks, I think, because I think last time, either you had commented about, or was shared about, the new legislation that's pending at the state. So there was a Senate bill, and honestly, what I found too, was there was a companion House bill, and I think both mirrored them, mirrored each other. The Senate bill kind of wandered its way a little bit quicker than the House bill did, and so that one did get approved by the Senate, it's been submitted to the House, I think, for their review, and I think that's still at the very early stages of moving it over to the House. The House bill is a little bit slower, the last, I checked honestly today, and it's in Rules Committee, and I think that's a super early stage of the idea of the process. And again, I'm, I'm probably going to misspeak, because I don't know the legislature world, I guess, on this. Now that they have the Senate bill in their possession as well, which really mirrored, I think, the House bill, my, my thought and question would be, is if they're either overlap them, or if there's a possibility that where they could actually use the Senate bill for their discussions and potential advancement, to get to a point of if they are going to approve it and get it to the governor, when it's way in that kind of a path, so, you know, that's, because the House bill's in an early stage, Senate bill's there for approval as well, so we just continue to monitor that. That's on the deceptive practice issue, which I think I had shared, is that there's not a city ordinance, even just in general, about the idea of deceptive practices. The state does have that, and I've seen some stuff online that just talked about that, even though there already exists things about deceptive practices that the AG's office could conduct, I think the, the feeling was to get more specific in relation to these kinds of centers, and, and so that is probably going to be a likelihood of, of advancing that way, and probably a better source of dealing with the concept of deceptive practices for these centers than it would be, at least just in my opinion, I'm not saying that, you know, mine carries the day, certainly council's free to have discussions and determine for themselves on that, in terms of the level of what we're talking about. And so again, I will put that in the memo too, even though, again, we've discussed it's been in share, just so that when I, at the memo stage of getting it submitted out, I'll give you what the current status of those are, just to get an idea of those, in conjunction with just the written version of the update I gave last time on the proposed ordinance, I think that was originally presented, the concept of special use permits, and I think there was one other topic too, that was kind of in that midst of local, I guess, concepts for dealing with these kinds of centers, so.
And so that, the, the bill that they're, that's making its way through, that's for deceptive practices of already existing, right? Like, they're, they're finding those that already exist?
No, what I, and I apologize if I, if I was misleading a little bit, I think there's already in play statutory language about the idea of deceptive practices. These bills are driven much more specifically to, and it's, I don't think it's necessarily even focused solely on these crisis pregnancy centers, I think it's a little bit broader than that in terms of licensed facilities on that, but they're getting more specific. There's going to be an additional now area, I guess, of that law that's dealing just specifically with this kind of concept. And I think a lot of times, when I get specific locally, and I think the state does it too, is you're probably looking at adding some different language, and adding potential different kinds of penalties based on what you believe the seriousness of this kind of situation is, and so, and I didn't do that, I can, if the council prefers, is look at what those penalties are that currently exist, versus what this bill is actually going to add in terms of those penalties. I mean, they're talking about a fine of up to $50,000, I think, if for some reason they are convicted of a violation. That sounds pretty significant to me, and probably beyond what currently exists as potential penalties, I, again, I'm only guessing off the top of my head, but typically, when you're getting more specific, you want to address a specific issue and provide maybe much more specific penalties, you know, for that kind of concept, so.
I guess what I'm asking is, is, or what I'm saying is, it's not preventative, it's after the fact. Yeah, so, and I think what we want is something preventative versus, you know, I, I'm glad they're looking at this to, to find those, and maybe they find them out of business, I don't know. But I think we were looking at something that could be preventative, but, and I don't think that that's what that's, those state bills are going to do.
It's not, and, and again, I'd probably put my thinking cap on, on, on for this one a little bit, and the reason I say that is, what's in place is, you're looking at kinds of violations, a lot of times you're looking for that complaining witness, I guess, that's been in there, this is what's happened to them, so when they come out, they can say, this is exactly what happened, and, you know, it's a violation of state law. I think for preventative, I, I think that was probably the concept behind what was proposed originally about them posting signs, unfortunately, again, as, as I see it, as it currently sits, you know, does have First Amendment implications, which is why I think, you know, that, that creates some trouble on that. You know, so to try and, and be upfront, you know, I'd want to think through the idea of what that possibility is, because you'd have, you'd be looking at doing something where you don't need someone to go into the facility and have something happen to them, that they now realize, okay, that was deceptive, or that created this problem, to know that it actually did occur.
Chris?
Just a clarification, Chandra, when you say preventative, are you also introducing the concept of, we're going to ban this kind of pregnancy center from ever establishing in Urbana, or, I mean, maybe just define it?
If, if possible, both, like, ban them from establishing, and then prevent people from going in there and having an, an outcome that they weren't anticipating having, I guess. Preventing them from, if they are seeking services, and they go into this thinking that they, you know, are getting something that they're actually not, I would like to prevent that from happening. But, but if we can all together prevent them from popping up in Urbana, I mean, I think that's the ultimate goal, but I don't know if we have that power.
Apologies, that, that's going to be part of the memo, because I know that was, I think, one of the original thoughts was the concept of zoning, and either just a general kind of zoning proposition, or I think Councilmember Wilkin commented about the idea of special use permits. And I alluded it in my update, is, as a general proposition, I can absolutely say with certainty is that outright ban prohibition on them, the state Supreme Court has even said, you really can't do that. You know, the special use permit takes a little bit more thought, as we shared, and Councilmember Evans, I think, has understood too. I touched on the idea of the jail expansion, because when you talk about zoning, you're looking at neighboring properties versus the impact that the business itself has just on people in general, like the generalized community concept, on that, that's really not what zoning really gets to, it's, it's more about those neighboring properties on that, but I'll elaborate on that in the memos, you can see that with citations, and I know Councilmember Wilkin was, is good about asking for those, on the idea of the case that have said outright bans, you know, are going to be invalidated, and then I'll describe the idea of, again, the special use permit concepts and ideas of how that generally applies to the idea of a, a business coming into the community.
Grace?
Thanks, thanks for the updates, Dave. I just had one quick thing too, just wanted to make sure you saw another email from Sarah, I just re-forwarded it to you if not, but some more good information from other municipalities, and some things to look at, I think went out to the whole council. So some of our community members have been really great in some of the information, just wanted to make sure you saw that too. And yeah, I would definitely appreciate kind of a written update on some of the information, the background, putting things together, and then ultimately, you know, I think ultimately working towards what are our options? What, what can we do, if anything? And I would be curious in kind of laying out those potential routes. Thank you all for your indulgence in the discussion.
Before we adjourn, I just wanted to make sure you all saw in your packet the answers to your questions about the fee schedule that you had sent in last week, so it's in your packet. And again, that's on file for another three weeks. All right, well, we'll know further business before the council, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.